Good evening, everyone. I'd like to go ahead and open the Town Council regular meeting for May ninth. It was moved because of elections on Tuesday. And with that, I'll have Memphis Clerk Treasurer to clerk treasure the call to roll.
Councillor Schinkin.
Here.
Councillor Hopper.
Here.
Councillor Gardner.
Here.
Councillor Peterson.
Here.
Councillor Nellens.
Here.
All our councillors are present.
With that, I'd like to ask you to please stand for a moment of silence. Give your thoughts and prayers, please keep Maggie Lee, who lost his life in the last few weeks in a fire, also for Trevor Lee and Stephanie Slawinski, who suffered smoke inhalation and are still recovering. I also wanted to announce that Jean Feingold, who was our longtime town attorney, passed away here recently at the right old age of ninety-four. So keep that in mind, then we'll follow with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item that we have up is a proclamation for Salvation Army Week, and I'm going to ask Councillor Schinkin to read that.
This is a proclamation of the Munster Town Council recognizing Salvation Army Week. Whereas the Salvation Army has been serving the people of Munster for a hundred and nine years, physically, emotionally, and spiritually. And whereas the Salvation Army is present where as needed, is greatest especially during times of crisis, where vulnerable citizens are most at risk of becoming homeless, hungry, addicted, or spiritually tired. And whereas the Salvation Army invites people of Munster to love beyond and help the organization continue to provide meaningful aid by feeding the hungry to those who need it most. And whereas it is fitting and proper of the Salvation Army Week to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy and volunteerism and community service in the town of Munster. And whereas National Salvation Army Week is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve others with their resources and time during the difficult periods many of us experience now there before it. Proclaim that the Town Council of the town of Munster hereby proclaims May thirteenth nineteen or the week of May thirteenth of the nineteen twenty-two four as Salvation Army Week. And the town of Munster encourages all citizens to join together and give back to the community in any way that is personally meaningful. Passed and adopted by the Town Council of the town of Munster, Lake County, Indiana, this ninth day of May twenty-two-four by a vote of five in favor, none opposed.
May we have a motion on that, please?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to adopt the proclamation, and I'll second it.
Any discussion on it? Clerk Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes.
Five-zero.
All right, we have an employee recognition coming up next. Chief Shackle?
Thank you. The Police Department's chair is on. The Police Department would like to recognize a special individual tonight. Luke Kern, can you stand up? Turn around, please, to get out of here. So everybody who works with Luke knows he always goes above and beyond for all of us here in the town of Munster. But in particular, on April fifteenth, about twelve-thirty in the afternoon, Luke was in his town of Munster truck, and he drove by two officers out with the subject that was... All right, thank you. They were two officers, Officer Remmers and Sergeant Overwood, were out with a shoplifter who came combatant. He started fighting with the officers. Luke Kern stopped his truck, hopped out, and subdued the subjects for the officers, preventing harm to the officers as well as the subject. So everybody went home safe that night. But it's because Luke went way above and beyond what most people wouldn't even allow they're getting about, and we wanted to recognize it. So we have this certificate for Luke that we don't give out too often. That's a certificate of appreciation awarded to Luke Kern for his exemplary service to the Munster Police Department for assisting officers subduing and combating subject on April fifteenth, twenty-two.
Next, we have a public hearing on additional appropriations. We'll call on our interim Town Manager Controller.
So at the last meeting, Council held first reading to do an additional appropriation for this DCD fund and that is solid waste management fund. Tonight, you're asked to hold a public hearing, which is required. After the public hearing, you'll be asked to, later in the meeting, have the second read and adopt the ordinance, the one we have to get approval from the DL to get solid waste fund, although in effect once the ordinance is adopted. So President Nunn will open the, conduct the public hearing. That's the next step.
Absolutely. With that, I will go ahead and open up a public hearing. This public hearing at this point is strictly for the additional appropriation. If anyone would like to come on it, comment on it, please come forward to the podium. State your name and address, please. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak on the additional appropriations? Seeing no one, I'll close the, hold the, the public hearing on that. And that takes us up to a point at which I would like to make some comments.
Mr. President, when was this item put on the agenda?
This particular item was, uh... It was supposed to be removed.
Okay.
It was supposed to be removed. And my comments are not regarding that item. My comments are regarding there appeared to be some concern amongst the community that the town of Munster was not financially solvent, that they would not be able to pay their bills, handle things. And I want to sit here and tell you and assure you that the town of Munster is very much solvent. I have sat down with our Controller to review this, and we went through and talked about the basic items that come in. We're anticipating our regular distributions coming from the county. We have our money that comes in from TIP. And I just wanted to assure everyone that we are financially solvent. So again, on Ridge Road, I want to just mention that that's something that we are studying, and that's the extent of that. All right.
Okay. We're studying for a five-lane, not reduced bit.
So we have a number of studies on that, and as Councillor Schinkin said, we are looking at five-lane program. But again, we're not prepared at this point to have any more discussion. We're working with the engineers and reviewing the information that they have. At this point, I would like to read some information here regarding the public comment. It will be kindly asked that all persons in public comment is limited to two minutes. There will be a total of twenty minutes allotted for this section for the public comments. Comments will be timed by the Clerk Treasurer. The council may exercise its discretion in allowing public comment to extend past twenty minutes, but it is not required to do so. Please keep your comments civil and constructive and related to public policy issues. In the event questions are posed to the council, we will note your questions in the meeting minutes and refer those questions to the appropriate department or staff to follow up and respond. The president, at their discretion, may ask or recognize speakers with different points of view to speak at the meeting. Public comments may also be submitted electronically. If you have a question or comment about an item on the agenda that you would like to have entered into the meeting minutes, please email those, that question or comment to the Clerk Treasurer, Wendy Miss, at wmiss@munster.in.gov. I would like to, when I open up the, open to the public session, I would like to, first of all, ask anyone that's in the public here that has a comment or question regarding something that does not pertain to the Center for Visual Performing Arts or Ridge Road. I would like to hear general comments in the town that we need to address. So with that, I will open up the open to the public. Please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and we'll go from there.
Yes, my name is Brett Stausvich. I live in ninety-five oh-one Cottonwood Drive. I've been here before to talk about speeding my community. Ridge Road, I mean, Camelia and Ozalia. They're talking about putting in speed bumps on Ozalia because they're redoing the service and all that. And I've heard two, maybe more. It's a quarter-mile stretch. Hope if you do at least three, it will slow these cars down. I'm going to Camelia Drive. It's another quarter-mile stretch. Columbia, Southwood, and the guys did a speed study there. We don't have the results of that yet, I guess. But you know, we need to do something there. And I know you maybe can't do it until you finish the road, but you can put up stop signs. You need to do something to slow these tires down. It's ridiculous and dangerous. And you can't put it off safe. I work in an industry where you don't do that, bad things happen.
Thank you very much.
I'm Kevin Capo, six-three-three River Drive. I've sent you all some of this stuff in the past. This is the terms, ordinance nineteen forty, from what I've gathered from talking with people and from the last meeting. I'm concerned that if it passes, it will impact the city for the town manager within six months severely. It may take money for TIP or money that I'm not supposed to be spent on what ordinance nineteen forty is for. It will disadvantage all the other town staff and employees for possibly multiple years. I'm concerned that someone two years out of the academy has the possibility of making more than the median income of citizens of the community, one hundred and seventeen thousand, with benefits, et cetera. I see that there's been no great exodus from the city. Everyone's having tried troubles getting employees these days that are willing to stay and work. We need to pay within our means. If you look in the news, you have California paying three and four hundred thousand people with overtime because everybody wants to make above average, and everybody can't make above average. That just goes to inflation. I was concerned that one of the persons for it last year, thought, or last week, month, talked about their eight-hour day and how they donated fifteen minutes, and their day was changed because of a phone call. That's just about everybody's job. So I was concerned if they brought that up. It was presented that this is what they wanted. Well, yes, everybody wants everything. Your kids want a pony, that's how they can get a puppy. You don't give them a pony and uniforms. When you talked about how you did it, you used average. Averages can be skewed by one person. It should be used the median when you're doing it. And then I was very concerned with transparency when one of the council members was telling people things, and he was shut down by others.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Chris Elo, forty-six, I'm in River Drive. If I can add, all Munster Lions, then you stand up, it'd be great. So I'm here on behalf of the Munster Lions as the current president. We're very much appreciative of the Town Council having him on the agenda, the ordinance to reestablish the Lions Club Drive name at Community Park. There's been some tremendous history between the town of Munster, Munster Lions Club, and Community Park. Here, much of the land that is currently Community Park was donated by the Munster Lions Club. So to continue that, to maintain that history and continue that legacy, it would be great to have that name reestablished, Lions Club Drive. Thank you.
Thanks, my courteous Chris.
Good evening, Mitch Barloga, nineteen hundred Bluebird Lane. I'm here to talk about a project that is on course to be constructed starting this year and then be finished next year. The infamous Bridges Over Ditches Project that will cross the ditches on the eastern side of the Fisher Street Trail of the Highlands. In my role at Northwestern Indiana, I've been on this project for probably often on forty-six years. We had one issue after another out there, including the Nippsco power lines and, of course, the pipelines. And thankfully, we've been able to make that work. Nippsco has actually been a very good partner, working with trailers throughout the region. What I want to bring to your attention, however, is that this is going to be a major east-west connection between Clear Lake Water Trail, Highland, and your Munster NC Railway. What I'd like you to know is the condition of the Fisher Street Trail, it was substandard best. Deplorable, pretty much what it is. I hope you have good demo work, you're right on it. I have done so several times. You're going to have an influx of people at the end of next year, so this is not an immediate issue, but you'll have an influx of people coming in through that area, one of the major east-west corridors of our regional trail network. And I just want to make sure you're aware of that. You talk to the staff. I was assured by your staff that there are no plans to pave this trail. Nippsco will not pave this trail. They were happy enough to give you the land for the trail. They will not pave the trail. That's a deal, your licensing agreement. I just want to make sure all of you are understanding of that. And the last thing I will do in my thirty seconds here is, where in I know you have, you do have a funding call for projects later this year. Unfortunately, we usually do not fund resurfacing or reconstruction of trail projects because we still have so many new trails to build. And if you were going to get that funding, you wouldn't be able to get it until twenty-nine zero. It's a five-year program. So I just want to make sure by twenty-two-nine, that trail could be a terrible change, not all together, so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Ryan, meeting two-twenty-two, White Oak Avenue. So I want to go ahead and process this and take this in military form that I think that our police officers do a fantastic job, and I do believe that they do actually get a raise. Now, when it comes to this, I do want the council to table a resolution of nineteen forty-nine until a comprehensive salary assessment can be conducted. And I've done some comparisons on the local towns and ordinances here. And when I look at this town comparison next to Munster, I see the average home price is the same at three hundred and thirty-five thousand. As this one, it's six-point-seven miles versus Munster, seven-point-six-five. This major corridor is with Illinois, this is the other town, of thirty-five thousand cars a day. This major corridor with us is sixteen thousand five hundred. Starting salary is seventy thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. The expected pay increase is supposed to be eighty-one thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars, six cents. Thirty officers at this town, forty-two currently in Munster. The police chief currently in twenty-two-three rankings made one hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four cents versus ours, which is one hundred and twenty-two thousand, eighty-one hundred and forty-four dollars and fourteen cents, with an expected pay increase of twenty-five thousand dollars. This town that is, and what this town is, is the town of Dire. Their statewide ranking is number three, where Munster is number five. So right then and there, that makes me show that we did not do a comprehensive study. It was basically brought forward, that the only study that was actually looked at was the town of Saint John. I did the research and looked at eight municipalities are making between sixty-six thousand and seventy-three thousand dollars. I absolutely agree, we should be looking into giving pay increases for these officers, but let's not just throw arbitrary numbers into this process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Mason, eight-six-three-nine, Holman Avenue.
You're gone, sorry.
All right, you're right, now I'm running the clock.
Okay. So...
I'm having trouble with my mouse, that's the issue here. So, all right, here you go, do go, Scott Mason.
So at the last Town Council meeting, much of the discussion was about pay rates for the police officers. Acting Town Manager Patricia Abbott did state that the town could not afford it. Now, President Nellens, today you did just say, you know, we totally can't afford it. Now, I fully admit I am a hillbilly from the Ozarks of Missouri. You don't have the budget online, show me. But what I'm more here about is what was going on during that conversation between Councilman Gardner and Acting Town Manager.
Anthony, I'd like to hold that. I don't consider that as appropriate for tonight's.
I do.
Well, I don't.
Well, unfortunately, you Roberts ruled an individual who could have found out how it was going to be paid, and you can't unring that bell. That is massively...
I stepped it up, I'm going to ask you to step down.
I paid this microphone to my taxes.
Scott, otherwise I'll ask someone to escort you down.
Fine.
Is there anyone else that would like to come in and come up and talk about Munster issues? Comments? Is there anyone else who would like to come forward in the open to the public? With that, I'm going to go ahead and close the open to the public. That takes us up to the consent agenda. Oh, that's right. We have some notes here.
Yes. We have received electronic emails as follows. We received regarding Ridge Road lane reduction. We received one person in support, one email in support. We received four emails saying no to the lane reduction. We had one person express frustration that the Ridge reimagined website was taken down. We had twenty-nine people that expressed, that shared that the Legacy Foundation had funds potentially available to pursue the CBPA. Of those, eighteen of them were Munster residents. We had six people, or six emails that stated, no, the town should not look into the CBPA. We had two emails that were in favor of the police pay rates. And we had two people, there are two emails that said they were concerned about the long-term impact of the pay rate increases. And I just... And we had one person that was upset about limiting public comments. No, no, I'm sorry, I misspoke. We had one person that applauded the time limit on public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then that takes us up to the consent agenda. Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion now.
I'm getting there, I got...
I second that.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Councillor Schinkin and Councillor Hopper, thank you.
The only comment I would make during the consent agenda is, in a couple of claim dockets, we are paying aquatics control for pond maintenance and things. And I know we had some issues, some residents asked issues about that today. If we could just follow up with aquatics control, make sure we have a good understanding of what they do and what we do, I think that would be much appreciated, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councillor Gardner. Any other comments, questions? Big, Clerk Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes.
Five-zero.
That takes us up to old business. And brings us up to ordinance nineteen thirty-eight, which we have the open to the public hearing for the additional appropriation.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to approve ordinance nineteen thirty-eight as presented.
I'll second that.
Any comments that you'd like to make? And again, this is something that we do in order to spend money. We have to have appropriations here in the state of Indiana. That's correct, okay. All right, any further questions, comments? We have a motion, we have a second. Clerk Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes.
Five-zero.
That takes us up to ordinance nineteen thirty-nine, the credit card authorization.
This is ordinance headfirst reading at the last meeting as well. It's to allow use of credit card by certain town staff. The only change from the previous reading is we've included the fire chief. We're looking for a motion to adopt the ordinance as amended.
Go ahead.
We have support.
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we adopt ordinance nineteen thirty-nine on second reading as amended. I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further comments? Clerk Treasurer, please call the roll.
Councillors Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes.
That takes us up to ordinance nineteen forty, which is amendment to the twenty-two-four salary ordinance.
There were a few amendments to the ordinance since first read. The first one is for the fire department, that secretary, we need to increase that from a part-time to a full-time position. The second is the probationary police officer rate, this is the incoming rate, has been increased to thirty-one dollars and forty-four cents. The council is also in the process of amending and clarifying the town code. You'll be considering some of those ordinances later this evening. And we would like to have an additional code enforcement officer able to enforce the new code. And then there were some minor language corrections that had to be made regarding the take-home vehicle policy.
Mr. President, I want to adopt ordinance nineteen forty on second reading as amended.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second that.
Comments, any comments, questions?
I guess I'd like to make a comment. Since the last time, and again, this is certainly focusing on the police department, but I do want to make sure that the other town employees are aware that we are considering a comprehensive salary and benefit study for the rest of the employees. When would that study start taking place, Tricia? Are we out with the RFP proposal and things like that right now?
We do have some proposals that have come in. We're waiting for one more. We're anticipating this being on the next meeting for council to consider.
Yeah, thank you.
So that means it would start soon as we do the letter of engagement and they can get it scheduled?
Very good, so, okay. I guess the other clarification is, while this is still being funded out of Fund One-O-One, again, certainly, a lot of this funding is being done by the TIP fund. Can you just kind of briefly discuss how that TIP money, is that a once-a-year transfer? Or is it, you know, I've heard some rumors that it's only one time ever, and I don't think that's true. I just want to clarify that this is a, an ongoing funding mechanism.
And because this is a new use for the TIP fund, where, where there's a certain element of putting the pieces into place... The, I, I would anticipate that there will be what we call a monthly transfer, we do monthly transfers regularly for a variety of things. An amount would be set during budget, and then it would be a transfer from the TIF fund into the general fund in order to supply the cash that's needed to make the payments. This year, what will happen is you, we will be coming back to you in the next few months, asking for an additional appropriation, because that cash, we can get that sent over, but we don't have the appropriations yet to make that transfer. But then it will ultimately, the checks to pay those things will actually come from the general fund.
And then I, would, I, I think part of the question, maybe our own questions for the public, is how much interest do we receive at this point on that TIF fund approximately?
We're a high, it's a highly competitive rate, it's, it's invested and it's over five percent, five, I think five-point-two-five, five-three-something along those.
But how much are you gonna bet on that? I think it was eight-hundred-and-sixty-thousand.
The amount of the TIF use, and how much for this, about four-hundred?
Well, probably, yeah, there'll be about four-hundred-some for this, then there's also the police vehicles that will be going in that TIF fund as well.
And then, part of the question, I think, comment was, we received around, if I remember from our discussion, around seven-point-five million dollars.
That's the estimate for this year.
Taxes in on the TIF. Does that come once a year, twice a year?
That comes in two separate payments. Uh, in June and December, it's tiny property tax payments.
And then if I recall right, we have about four million in bond obligations. Thereabouts.
I, I, I think it's, it's somewhere around there, I think it might be a little bit more than that, I don't have the number off the top.
So roughly then leaves three million dollars that's been put into the TIF accumulation fund, call it that.
Yes.
Do we have four coming out? We have seven-point-five, that gives a little adjustment, but just in round numbers so that generally the public can understand. That we're looking nominally around four-hundred-thousand dollars that will need to be added to the general fund for the, to pay the salaries for the police. The interest on the amount of money currently in the TIF fund is approximately eight-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars a year, and our clerk treasurer does go out and make sure that we get the highest rate on that money. And there's seven-point-five approximately million dollars that comes in, in tax money off the TIF that goes directly to the town of Munster. With about four million in obligation to bonds that have been taken out, that have to be paid, and that leaves approximately three million dollars that goes into the TIF fund. That reasonably accurate?
Reasonably.
I mean, I'm just taking some general numbers so that we can comprehend, uh, we're not getting down to the fifty cents because we have ad- adequate coverage. So I know like in bonds, when you take, ask for bonds, they want you to have two, two times the amount of edge coverage.
Again, I, I'm glad that the state legislature changed the TIF laws last year, and I, and again, I think it's good that we're taking advantage of that to improve pay salary and, and the safety of the town. Um, again, I think it is also important that we continue to look at what the original TIF monies were, were there for, was, you know, economic development, redevelopment, infrastructure improvements. I think we can do both, and, and I think, uh, again, it's, it's looking forward to how we put this into the budget and how we open the TIF funding, and again, I feel confident that we can do this.
Mr. President, I'm also, uh, in addition to the interest income from the TIF and the capital appreciation, I was pleased to learn that there is another resource funding that's available potentially for our public safety needs. And I spoke with Ms. Abbott extensively, that's the LIT, Local Income Tax Public Safety Fund, isn't that right, Ms. Abbott?
Correct.
In fact, it's my understanding that we presently have accumulated a balance of three-point-one million in that account, is that right?
I believe that's right.
And we enjoy a revenue, an annual revenue of approximately six-hundred-thousand. Now, I understand that we currently have some charges on that account that range between a hundred and fifty to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand annually, but it gives us an additional source of funding that is both repetitive and sustainable. That gives us flexibility to provide for our police officers and ensure that the public safety commitment of this council remains firm and strong. Would you agree with that, Ms. Abbott?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. So, we have a motion. We have support. Any further questions, comments? Again, I would like to just make one comment here, that this was really looked at very hard, it's not a question of this is what they want. We have had difficulty attracting candidates to come, everyone's having difficulty attracting police officers. It's, um, it's a dangerous job. And our society is making it more and more difficult, and we need to be attracting good officers, retaining good officers, and making sure that our community is safe for the residents. I stand behind that, that was, uh, something that we talked about in the campaign, I will mention that, and it's, it's important. It's very important, and as Counselor Gardner brought up, we are gonna do a study on all the rest of the employees in town, because they're very important, just as, uh, Luke stood up and helped the officers out, that's very commendable. And we have a lot of good employees throughout the entire town, all departments. So with that, Clerk Treasure, would you?
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
Justice five-zero.
Thank you, thank you. So that takes us up to new business. And with, that takes us to Resolution twenty-one thirty-one.
Resolution twenty-one thirty-one is to adopt a retirement health savings plan. This is something the town had offered a number of years ago, there were changes in IRS regulations, and we weren't allowed to offer it to other employees. Uh, now, it is available to the town, it can be used for, as, as a means to attract and retain employees. You can have the town either contribute for the employee, or there can be mandatory deduction of the employee's salary. This was part of the resolution earlier this year to put the compensation package for the interim town manager, so we're looking about the ordinance adopted to implement this plan.
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we adopt Resolution twenty-one thirty-one as presented. I'll second.
We have a motion, we have support, any further comments, questions?
I guess I would just further this resolution, and when we do the salary and compensation survey, I, I do think we have a number of employment practices that might be a little bit outdated. Uh, and I think it is important that we look at some of those outdated, you know, uh, personnel issues and policies and vacation time, leave time, and things like that. I think it, this would be a very good opportunity for us to really review some of the outdated practices and update to the current times.
And, and what is being asked for in that, the proposals for that study is to study the wages of all non-sworn employees and the benefit package of all employees, in, in, including.
The sworn.
The driver.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
Any other comments? All right, thank you.
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. That takes us up to ordinance nineteen forty-one, and as, uh, the cap, the, um, Lions president mentioned, that the Lions were very instrumental with Community Park, and we are looking to, again, have the name of the roadway within the park all to be Lions Club Drive. And we're not asking for the name of the park to be changed, because everybody knows it as Community Park, but this way the roads all reflect the Lions Club, which the Lions did have a very active role in that, in that, uh, park being developed, and also the social center. Uh, they were involved with the being built, they involved expanding it, and then a second expansion, which is a nice facility, I believe the, uh, occupancy is somewhere around a hundred folks, so it makes for a nice place to have a, a gathering of families. Uh, you can have a kitchen, there's washrooms, there's tables, chairs, there's outside area, and again, that's highly used, uh, I checked with the park department, so. With that, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. President, I am proud to adopt ordinance, I move to adopt ordinance nineteen forty-one on first reading as presented.
This needs to be two separate notions. The first one, we need you to move to suspend the rules and waive the readings to allow for the adoption.
Do that, let's try.
And unanimous consent on that.
Okay, Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules and waive the readings to allow for the adoption of ordinance nineteen forty-one on first reading as presented.
We have support.
You're the last one, I wish you'd second it.
I second it.
I'm not stopping anyone to upset them.
So we have a motion, and a second for suspending the rules and, uh, voting on this.
Very good. Counselors, shake, are we ready for the vote? Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes, okay, now let me move to adopt ordinance nineteen forty-one on the first reading as presented.
I second that.
You know, I want to, I, I, I do want to make a comment on this, I'm proud to serve with the Lions, been in the organization for over twenty-five years, a lot of you are out here, we do really good things for the community, I ask all you people out there who aren't Lions to support our, uh, annual pancake breakfast and our state pride, which is coming up at, um, the social center this year, we're gonna try to make it into a fun event, um, have an outdoor concert, we're gonna have outdoor venue over there, and just try to bring some fun back and, and, uh, raise some money to give back to the community, but yeah, this is great, it, it used to be called Lions Club Drive, I don't know why it changed in the first place, but.
But we're here, we're here, we're taking care of it. Any other comments? Again, I'm, I'm, I'm very pleased and proud to have this happen, I'm fortunate enough to be a, over a thirty-five-year member of Lions, I kind of wondered, how did that happen? And again, I'm appreciative of all the folks that are here in the office, the early audience, and all the Lions that came out tonight to, uh, witness this. So with that, Clerk Treasure?
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. All right, now, that takes us up to, uh, Item C, ordinance nineteen forty-two through nineteen fifty.
Yes, these are eight ordinances that are going to clean up some of the code enforcement sections of our town code. The ninth ordinance is what's known as Schedule A, that's what houses the fees and fines associated with infractions against those. This is something that has been reviewed by councils, and being worked on for a period of time now. Um, this is something that, there is also a, a sense of wanting to adopt it on first reading, so again, we're gonna look for two separate motions, the first one to adopt it on first read. And we need for, when the motion happens, if you could follow the way it's recommended, because we need you to list each ordinance separately, just so that it's clear.
Mr. President, um, I will, by motion and roll call vote, move to suspend the rules and waive the readings, allow for the adoption of ordinance nineteen forty-two, and ordinance nineteen forty-three, and ordinance nineteen forty-four, and ordinance nineteen forty-five, and ordinance nineteen forty-six, and ordinance nineteen forty-seven, and ordinance nineteen forty-eight, and ordinance nineteen forty-nine, and ordinance nineteen fifty on first reading as presented.
I second that.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion, comments? So we'll be voting on.
I, I guess, I guess typically, yeah, typically I, I would say that I always like to have ordinances in two readings, but I certainly understand, um, what these ordinances are, more cleaning up the ordinances than anything else, and so, uh, I would certainly support the, the way you have the rules.
Mr. President, I'm gonna weigh in here, this was a heavy lift, and I, I want to give credit to, uh, all the staff, I participated in meetings on this. And I also want to give credit to Attorney Nicole Bennett, who, uh, is colleague and wife of our colleague, Mr. Westling. Uh, she did tremendous amount of work on this, and, uh, I was, as a new councilman, I was pleasantly surprised to see the body of work that she had done. And she was able to, uh, complete it, work, uh, walk us through some concerns and address those concerns, and as a result, we're able now to restore some measure of, of, of code enforcement, uh, that deals with nuisances and other types of matters, so, uh, I think this was a tremendous job on her part, and, uh, she deserves, she and the rest of the staff that were involved served tremendous credit.
Thank you, yes, it was, and these are things that were, and then they were not, and now they're gonna be back.
Now they're back, that's right.
So we're calling the, the roll for waiving the rule.
You got it. Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
And Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
Mr. President, I will then follow up with the, the motion to enact these ordinances, uh, by motion and roll call vote, uh, I move to adopt ordinance nineteen forty-two, and ordinance nineteen forty-three, and ordinance nineteen forty-four, and ordinance nineteen forty-five, and ordinance nineteen forty-six, and ordinance nineteen forty-seven, and ordinance nineteen forty-eight, and ordinance nineteen forty-nine, and ordinance nineteen fifty on first reading as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further comments? Seeing them, please call the roll.
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
Five-zero.
All right, that takes us up to Item D, which is a warranty deed for the Kenmarra project.
So last year, the council and the redevelopment commission both approved Phase One A of the Kenmarra Development Agreement. Part of that agreement involves, uh, conveyance of land and a warranty deed that goes along with it. Right now, what's being asked is that the form of the warranty deed be approved by council, and you're gonna be asked to do it again in the redevelopment commission.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this is not the actual conveyance of the land, this is approving the form of the warranty deed that actually will come from NISCO once the developer hits certain benchmarks. We have reviewed this with the attorney that's handling this project for us, he has confirmed that this is a requirement under the terms of the deframment. It's not putting the town in any sort of risk, there's not a cost associated with this, there is no increased liability to the town for approving this.
And that is Attorney John Reed.
Attorney John Reed, yes.
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the form of the warranty deed as presented. I'll second that motion.
We have a motion, we have support, any further discussion, comments?
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Um, yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. Okay. That takes us up to Item E, which is published, unit number three-twenty, trade-in.
This is the, we've had this happen to us a couple of times now, where the, a new vehicle is authorized, we are given a trade-in price, and then it takes so long for the new vehicle to come in that the trade-in price decreases. That's what's happening here, uh, so we're, we need approval to spend that extra, to accept that lower amount and to pay that difference that we're not going to get in the trade-in.
Because again, these trucks took a long time to come, so we have, miss, support?
Mr. President, I'd, I'd make a motion, uh, to approve one two-thousand-twenty-three Ford F-two-fifty truck purchased for a price of seventy-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-two dollars, minus the trade-in that, trade-in of fourteen thousand, five-hundred dollars, for a total price of fifty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-two dollars from Paul Carrying Ford. from Paul Carrion Ford to replace unit three twenty.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further comments? Please call the roll.
Councillor Schinkin?
Yes.
Councillor Hopper?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Peterson?
Yes.
Councillor Nellens?
Yes.
Five zero.
That takes us up to item F. And that's purchase of message, message boards. I'm sure the number of you have seen them around town. And the town of Munster owns a number of them, which means we can put them up at any time whenever they're needed.
Yes, and this is the purchase of two new lights.
So do we have a motion on that?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the purchase of two Vermac message boards for a price of forty thousand one hundred and seventy dollars minus a trade-in of three thousand dollars for a total price of thirty-eight thousand two hundred and seventy dollars from Deloitte Enterprises in Knox, Indiana to replace units three seventy-eight and three seventy-nine.
I'll second.
They have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Again, as I was saying, it's, we have our own and, and we don't have to go out and rent them and sometimes they're not available. And again, if there's a problem where a road has to be closed, or we also use them to let the public know that a section is gonna be closed for work in the future. So they're very handy. Very good, so.
Councillor Schinkin?
Yes.
Councillor Hopper?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Peterson?
Yes.
Councillor Nellens?
Yes.
That takes us up to uh item uh G, I'm sorry, item G River Ben, and we have some work to do there.
Yes, we, yes, the, the gate opener uh needs to be replaced. The fence has been damaged. Um, and this really is just to get that, get that repair room done, get the new, new fence and gate opener put in.
Mister President, I'll make a motion to approve a bridge fence and gate to make repairs to the River Ben water storage tank facility by replacing the gate opener. Gate and fence repair for a cost of fifteen thousand five thirty-two.
And we have support?
I second that.
We have motion, we have support. Any further questions, comments? Again, it's in our effort to try and keep the town in good order and make sure that it looks good and it's functional and safe. With that.
Councillor Schinkin?
Yes.
Councillor Hopper?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Peterson?
Yes.
Councillor Nellens?
Yes.
That takes us up to item H, which talks about uh water tank inspections.
Item came in the tank inspection at the River Ben um water tank. And they found several large rust spots, some peeling paint um and around the perimeter, uh there was some it, it appears that animals have been burrowing underneath. Um, in order to come into compliance, we have called in SEH to do an inspection, come up with a plan for how we're going to fix it uh and address the situation. So we're looking for approval for SEH to do that work.
I'd like to motion to approve, uh approve SEH for a total cost of twelve thousand five hundred dollars for the River Ben water tank inspection and bid specification package to make needed repairs.
I'll second that motion.
Do we have a motion, we have a second. Any further comments, questions? Seeing them, go for the vote.
Councillor Schinkin?
Yes.
Councillor Hopper?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Peterson?
Yes.
Councillor Nellens?
Yes.
It takes us up to item I, that IOT agreement for the water billing website.
So at some training sessions that the Port Treasury and I had been at, we learned that the Indiana Office of Technology, they will host and create websites. And we have been trying for a number of years to be able to offer our water billing customers the ability to sign up for their service and arrange for final bills online. Um, and the, what the IOT program offers seems like a good solution. Um, it will cost us about twelve hundred dollars a year. They'll get it set up. Customers will be able to go in, fill out forms um and, and be able to sign up for, for their water service. This is something we get asked every single day in the water billing. Why can't I just do this online? So we would like to try to work with them and, and see how it works out. It would be a link. Right now, when it, on the town website, if you, if you click the link, it just details that you have to come into the office. This would be a link to the other, to this other website.
Well, so many people do things online.
Yeah.
From home. Do we have a motion on this?
Mister President, I'll make a motion and I move for a voice vote to approve the variable services private task order. Create, maintain the town of Munster water bill and website.
I second that.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further comments?
Councillor Schinkin?
Yes.
Councillor Hopper?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Peterson?
Yes.
And Councillor Nellens?
Yes.
The uh item J is letter of engagement with HWC Engineering, and they'll be working with the building department.
They'll be working with the building department to uh work on the zoning map um and to help with I, I think it's gonna be a combination to help the staff reports and those kinds of things. Unfortunately, HWC was not able to give us their letter of engagement yet, so we'll be bringing that back to you at the next meeting. Uh, they have tentatively agreed, yes, we'll be able to do it. They just didn't get the letter of engagement, so it's dead.
And they're also a group that we have used recently in the past.
Yes, we have worked with them recently and last year, which is part of what made staff suggest them because they are familiar already with town code and with how we do things here at Munster.
All right, then we will see that at the next council meeting. That takes us up to reports. Any reports? Port Treasurer have some report.
I have two to take care of everyone. Um, since we last met, there was a um, a NRC commission meeting. And at the meeting, um, there was discussion uh regarding a resolution that will be presented in July. I would expect we may see it at this council in July um asking for support of NRC. And what they're asking for is an increase to detailed invoice from the state board of accounts and in some way to reduce the audit fees. So I will be bringing that back to you. They also discussed the end, that end dot is having a safety summit on May twenty-ninth. And I just um wanted to make everyone aware that that's an avail, available to all. And then to change to a, a second organization, the Shared Ethics Advisory Commission is having training on May thirty-first from ten to one at Avalon, and the town of Munster participates in the commission. And uh several department heads and other leaders in the town plan on attending. And if you're interested, please let me know if you can get me the information if anyone else is, would care to join us there.
Do we or have we sent this out to all the boards and commissions?
I can send it out to all the boards and commissions.
We have done that, invited any one of the boards and commissions that would like to attend.
I will send that out in the morning.
Right, thank you. Any other reports? How about portfolio reports? Anything? All right.
No, I'm just, I'm done.
Announcements? All town council meetings will begin at seven PM unless otherwise noted. May twentieth, twenty twenty-four will be the regular town council meetings and the regular redevelopment commission. Looking for a motion to adjourn?
I make that motion and adjourn.
Second.
Emotionally of a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? All right, that takes us up to redevelopment commission. So we close the one meeting and I'll open up the next redevelopment commission, regular meetings.
It's just keep quiet for three more minutes.
We'll move forward, so. We'll call the order, roll call.
Commissioner Schinkin?
Here.
Commissioner Hopper?
Here.
Commissioner Gardner?
Here.
Commissioner Peterson?
Here.
Commissioner Nellens?
Yes.
Again, if there's anyone that would like to make a public comment regarding the redevelopment commission, it's the same uh criteria as we had in the regular meeting. So I'll open up the public session for the redevelopment commission. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak to the redevelopment commission? Again, is there anyone that likes to come forward and speak about redevelopment action?
Hello again. Mitch Farlow, the nineteen hundred Bluebird Lane. Um, I will bring up Ridge Road and I'll bring it up in this regard. All of you were elected last year with the intention of doing what's right for this community. And I totally believe that in case, no one here wants to be elected to what's wrong. And of course, that is the desire of all of us here for the love of Munster and other people that want to see these projects succeed. Unlike another project that may, where a community looks at it, reviews it, this one has actually gone through the process of very laborious, very long and a very expensive planning process. It was also awarded seventeen million dollars. So the Rage Grant, and I'm just up here to more or less present information. You probably know this, if you don't, I was in the middle of a Rage Grant and um I didn't tell that. It took over two years to get a grant to read the sign. Uh, we're, we're not involved. Okay, so you guys have your grant to read the sign. Thankfully, you also have an extra year to work on this. Your obligation deadline is September twenty-sixth. So all I ask is that it is your right and it is your duty to review this project to make sure it benefits the community. And we all respect that. But we have time to work that out. In fact, my calculations are correct. If you have all this year to work on it, it's perfectly fine. The feds wait, they waited for us. And the way three seventeen million dollars is something that should be strongly considered by any community going forward. That's all I said. Thank you.
Then I'm gonna comment on Ridge Road. We were elected and we were elected by you, the majority, to not see this reduction go through. And elections have consequences and we are looking with, working with the uh the engineers right now in order to keep the grant, but stay five lanes and unify Ridge Road. That's what we were elected for and that's what we're gonna work on. So you can either work with us or against us on this, but it won't be reduced to three lanes.
Yes. Yeah, well, it's a better way to comment on that job.
I, I, I'm sorry, but should we be talking about our limits like that? I'm a public citizen. I'm just stating, I mean, it was all paid for.
Okay. All right.
Who the ones?
Can we have some more folks that would like to come forward and speak? Please give your name and address.
Hi there, my name is Austin Beach, uh seventeen twenty-five, world-winning. I've been in Munster for about two years now. I'm also a treasurer of Munster High School. Um, I would love to attend more of these meetings. Uh sadly, I work as an investment banker, which means those punch hour works are re, punch hour weeks are real. Um, so this is unfortunately probably my second meeting uh in terms of here supposed to be Munster. So I uh like to say that, you know, as an investment banker, uh I view things in terms of that. And so I see the Ridge Road project as viewed. It's kind of a left and right divide. But for me, most important thing is what increases the value of my home. And on this, I'm gonna say that research seems to indicate three lanes might be the best. Um, as you look at different studies, particularly of those that have published viable property transportation, doing road diets increases the value of property. If you look at just Dallas five Indianapolis, when they did the road diet, the Indianapolis cultural trail, that attracted three hundred million dollars worth of investment into Indianapolis and the roads are connected. If we don't do this in the right way, in a way that's most focused on value, we could be losing out for our city as a whole. Now, what I cover for you is multi-unit healthcare or physician's offices. And that is something that is particularly close to Munster, so drives our economy. And we are great in the healthcare retail sector. Healthcare retail, for those who don't know much about it, is probably the best possible retail that you can have. An average healthcare retail spot produces anywhere from one five million dollars in revenue. But it is the steak dinner, I'd say, of retail. But a diet of only steak dinner is problematic just as it's having retail, there is only healthcare offices. By any investor target, you need to diversify your assets. And we also need to diversify our commercial presence. Best way to do that is by supporting the Ridge Road project in a way that increases the commercial diversity of Munster. So that's all I want to say. Uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. State your name and address, right?
Good evening. My name is Hoss Adami. Been here before. Uh, I live in nineteen oh one Fisher Street. Um, I do support the Ridge Road project. Um, I know that you all campaigned on killing the project, um or dramatically changing the project. Um, but as someone that has lived here twelve years, um I love Munster, uh I love the people here. Uh, we have a lot to offer, but right now um schools are our biggest kind of assets, I think, for the draw. So we have to look at diversifying what we offer families to move here. Um, I work in the city, come down the highway, I take torrents to Ridge anytime eighty ninety-four is backed up. You drive along Ridge Road through Illinois, it's like a Sunday drive. It's calm, it's slow, but there's no crazy. Soon as you hit Munster and it goes to two lanes each side, it turns to Mad Max. People get aggressive, they can pass on the right. You have people coming in and out of retail. And the reason um I have some experience in uh traffic patterns is where I worked in the Illinois Medical District. I worked on a two hundred million dollar construction project that was right in the artery of the Illinois Medical District that involved uh was at four hospitals, uh police, fire, EMS, and the ERs of all those buildings. So I worked with them to design the traffic pattern during this construction phase. Because construction, it is crazy and I can understand how local businesses would be a little concerned with that. But we can work with engineers, with the designers, with proper signage, uh proper markings. Um, we can look at TIP funds to help those businesses during the construction. And if we can build this Ridge Road as its plan, it will just become another great asset to the town of Munster.
All right, thank you. There anybody else who'd like to come forward? Seeing no one, I'll close the over to the public session. That takes us to the consent agenda.
I make a motion. I make a motion. We broke a consent agenda, so.
I second.
In motion, second, comments? Call for the vote.
Commissioner Schinkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nellens?
Yes.
And that takes us up to uh old business. We have no old business, but new business, we have the warranty deed with Kenmarra Project.
And this is the exact same thing that you were asked to approve during the council meeting.
Okay, Mister President, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the form of the warranty deed as presented.
I second.
We have support?
I second that.
Yes. Any further questions, comments?
Mister, Mister President, I have a question for council. Uh, Mr. Westling, um again, I paused in reacting this uh during the council session. This appears to be a red line draft. This is gonna be cleaned up for fight before final issuance. Is that correct? I'm looking at the third page, it's got some strikeouts. This is just the formatting. We're approving the format to be completed at the time of issuance.
I believe that's correct, but you'll recall this is Mister Reed, it's kind of like this. But I, but my understanding is that what you just said is a hundred percent okay.
I just wanted to confirm that that's, that's the general understanding.
Okay. I'm saying. I mean, you can look at, in there, it's got a date for it to be entered. That's, so there's some, yeah, some things that, this is the form, the actual deed will be cleared.
I just, I'm just clarifying.
And then the actual deed will come before us or approval?
At that time.
Gradification or?
That, this is West, in your opinion, removing those strikeouts and, and placing the dates and whatnot to reflect final issuance isn't gonna be a legal problem, that's correct?
No, it'll be fine.
Thank you, Mister President.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Seeing them?
Commissioner Schinkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nellens?
Yes. There are no announcements? Looking for an adjournment?
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Second.
Emotionally of a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? All right, that concludes our meetings for this year. Thank you very much for attending.
Now I can come later to walk at the end.